Call the meeting to order at 6:05. To talk about Ladbrokes and Tubbs Brook Stream geomorphic assessment and river corridor plan.
Well, I'll start off. I'm Michael Batra. I'm with the county regional commission. I think most of you know me. And this is Evan Fitzgerald with Fitzgerald Environmental Associates. Could we actually go around for everybody so everybody knows who everybody is, if that's okay? We'll start first.
Bruce Martin.
Mike Slattery, chairman and planning commission.
Sue Caraman, select board.
Jim Winchester, private citizen.
Jason O'Lancey, select board.
I'm Mr. Jeff.
And Linda.
Yeah, Linda.
Well, you all, or some of you may remember, we actually met here probably a couple of years ago to talk about hazard mitigation plan. And one of the hazards we talked about was flooding and flooding on some of the, especially the streams like Ladbroke and Tubbs Brook. And after that, there was an opportunity for funding through something called the ecosystem restoration program. The Housak River had been studied previously. And as you know, with most studies, they often say you need to study two more studies. And the studies initially had identified that sedimentation was a major factor in terms of water quality along both the Housak and Ladbroke and Tubbs Brook. And sedimentation can do a lot of things. It can, of course, impede certain aquatic organisms, fish and the like, but also can clog culverts and damage infrastructure. So there's a lot of reasons to look at, are there ways to reduce that? In addition, since this has all occurred, stormwater management has become a much bigger issue in Vermont, especially around Lake Champlain. But all of, there's a lot of focus on doing work along roads to reduce sedimentation into the streams. So we put, got the funding and we hired Evan and his crew to investigate the two, the two streams that were really the focus that A and R had identified were Ladbroke and Tubbs Brook, as well as the main stem of the Housak. And we identified landowners along those streams and we wrote them all letters asking for permission so they could go on their properties and look at the streams and look at culverts and things. I think we only had one landowner, we had two landowners, right? One said yes, the other one said no, and everybody else, we basically said, if you don't, we don't hear from you, we assume that's okay. And so nobody ever complained except, I guess, one person we didn't.
Yeah, we were kind of able to work around that property.
Yeah. Most people probably didn't even know they were there because the stream's in the back of the property.
We're mostly walking along the stream, not, you know.
Yeah. So Evan's going to describe the investigations. We had an initial kickoff meeting in 2016. Jason, you were there. And much of the outcome was an identification of a series of projects along the roads and along those streams to deal with sedimentation. And what we're hoping this will be a benefit to you is these projects are things that you could apply for funding, for state funding, if you're doing any work along those streams or doing any roadwork. In many cases, there are things that you'd probably have to fix anyway. So it's not something you have to do. This isn't saying you have to do any of these things, but it does give you the opportunity, a better opportunity to get grant funding than if a lot of these weren't identified. So, oh, and we did actually get some funding and we're still working on an agreement with the town. We have watershed grant funding to do work along, one of the projects on Skippery Road. And we've been talking to Joel about that. We're hopefully getting to get that going next year.
Yep.
So that's my brief introduction. And otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Evan.
All right.
And if you have any questions, and then, you know, during this, just feel free to jump up and down.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Again, I'm Evan Fitzgerald. I'm the hydrologist. Our company's up in the Burlington area, Colchester, actually. We do a lot of work around the state. Some work in New York and New Hampshire mostly related to rivers and hydrology and flooding. Actually, going to scoot over here and dim the lights so that hopefully you can see the screen a little better. So I've got about a forty-five, hopefully about a forty-five minute talk. And then we'll, you know, have an opportunity at the end to go back through any of the pictures or maps and have a discussion about any of this information. Some of this gets a bit technical and I'll do my best to not bombard you with jargon and technical terms. But if anyone has any questions along the way, just raise your hand and stop me and we can talk through it. So, yeah, this is, just to be sure, this is a summary of stream geomorphic assessments and river corridor plan for Lad and Tubbs Brook in panel. And the purpose of this talk and the meeting is hopefully to have you come away with a better understanding of sort of the baseline conditions of Lad and Tubbs Brook, what kind of water quality exists and impacts. And also, as Michael said, opportunities to reduce flood risk. I know that's a big concern after Irene and a lot of other kind of frequent floods that we seem to be seeing more and more. Just a quick agenda. I'm gonna, before I get into the information specific to panel, wanted to give you a little background about this type of work and why it's relevant and some of the different types of mapping and data that we use, not just here in panel, but around the state. And then talk specifically about Ladbroke, what are called Phase One and Two geomorphic assessments, and the projects that we identified using that information in panel, and some conclusions. Again, we'll have a chance to talk through all this stuff. Yeah. So Mike already touched on this. Here's the funding source at the bottom. Again, it's Agency Natural Resources Ecosystem Restoration Program. And this is a program that funds a lot of different things around the state related to water quality, flood resiliency. It's especially up where I live, you know, Lake Champlain basin. There's a lot of focus right now on water quality in the lake. So a lot of projects funded for that stuff. DEC is the, again, the funding source and kind of helps oversee the data. They QA our data. They review our information that we collect and sign off on it. BCRC got the grant and we were hired as consultants to do the work. So a little background here. Of course, you know, we know flooding has been a concern in panel. This is a picture that Shelley Stiles took on, it is August 28, 2011. This is, I believe, up on 349, looking down onto the Darling Farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Housak Valley filled up with water. Fair to say, one of the worst floods in recent times in the valley. So, you know, basic stuff. We know rivers move a lot of water, floods, and floodplains are, fill up and slow that water down. And also sediment and debris gets deposited out in the floodplains. You know, one of the things that we don't often kind of appreciate in the floods is we don't get up too close to flowing water hopefully is that rivers also move, in addition to moving a lot of water, they move a lot of sediment and debris during floods. We don't often see that because it's, you know, suspended in the water and moving quickly. Here's just the picture. When we were doing our work, we were, you know, out in the streams and there was a pretty good thunderstorm while we were out one day. This is down by the post office, just a quick little burst of rain and pretty salty water. So the idea, the overarching idea of this work is that we, you know, study these streams in as much detail as we can with the scope that we have, really get a baseline assessment of the conditions in the brook, in these brooks, in terms of their stability, what kind of erosion and flood risks exist. And then we use that information to identify projects along, along these streams that can mitigate water quality, reduce flood risks. And hopefully, a lot of times, those, you know, sort of go hand in hand. Yeah, I talked about flooding and what floodplains do, the kind of value of floodplains. There's, it's an important concept. I'm sure you all appreciate, but this is a kind of a model of, you know, what happens in a flood. Let's say the Housak River, you know, coming into Vermont. Here's, well, this is time on the horizontal axis and flow on the vertical here. So you get a surge of water. And if you have a healthy floodplain that's connected, like the Housak River, you know, the water can spill out, slow down. You tend to downstream get a lower flow and that flow slows down and tends to be less destructive. In, where I live, on the Winuski River, big tributary that drains into Lake Champlain, we studied that river in a lot of detail. After the flood in Waterbury, it was flowing at about 50,000 cubic feet per second. By the time it got down to Burlington, the peak flow on the USGS gauge was 25,000 cubic feet per second. So if you've ever driven up and down Interstate 89, you know, in that valley, there's a lot of farmland, big valley. All that water fills up the valley, slows down. But when we get a lot of what we call encroachment along floodplains and river corridors, roads, buildings that pinch that floodplain down, we get less of that effect. Floodplains do less of their job. We tend to get more destruction downstream. Important concept here. With that in mind, there, you know, there are a number of tools that state of Vermont's been, and FEMA has been using for years to evaluate risk along floodplains and try to protect these areas that are assets. So in Vermont, we generally have two types of maps, the FEMA maps, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, the floodplains. And then kind of more recently, river corridors have been promoted by A and R. And that's, so the kind of purpley area are the floodplains that are mapped by FEMA. And then these yellow hatching here are the river corridors. Floodplains tend to show where floodwaters will spill in a floodplain or flow quickly close to the river. River corridor is kind of similar, although they map where the river is liable to meander and erode and occupy the valley over the long term. And, you know, I think it's fair to say, we've all been seeing a lot of floods more frequently lately. And this, this has crept into our work and become more important. You know, the information's out there now. We're seeing changes in how frequently we get these heavy rainstorms. It's just one example of a trend across the nation, the highest trend for, on the top there, observed change and heavy, very heavy precipitation. In our region, we've seen the biggest change. And then if you just take a really simple graph, some of my colleagues at UVM did a few years back. If you just take the number of days in a year where you have at least an inch of rain, and you plot that, this is from records in Burlington that go back to 1880. You see that around 1970 or so, we see a trend there upward. And that's borne out in the records on the rivers as well. We tend to be seeing more frequent floods since about 1970 forward on our rivers in the northeast. Yeah, whether, whether you believe in climate change or not, or what have you, I mean, the data is there. It's suggesting we're seeing a big change and we've got to be prepared for it. Oh, and here's a, so I mentioned, you know, records on rivers. This is the Housak River in Williamstown, Massachusetts. This is a record going back to 1941. Each, each one of these orange bars is a year and the peak flow from that year. This blue line here is the ten-year flood level. The gray line is the fifty-year flood level. And this yellow line is the hundred-year flood. There's Irene there, 2011. It's about a hundred-year flood on the Housak. That's about what we saw on a lot of rivers in Vermont. Some of them were up, you know, considered a 500-year flood. A few others were, you know, closer to a 50. But it's really, I don't know, if you look at this, there's no real discernible trend, at least in the, in the peak floods here. It is kind of interesting to see some patterns here, maybe in, you know, just general wet weather and precipitation. But if you look at this kind of a record on some of the other rivers in the region, it's definitely, tends to be trending up. All right. So now I'm going to shift to the specific stuff that we did in panel. Any questions so far on that information? Or thoughts? Okay. So, you know, Michael mentioned, mentioned that the main stem of the Housak River was previously studied using these same, same assessments. So here's panel, Route Seven, and, I'm sorry, I said 349 earlier. I'm getting my roads next. 346.
346, yeah.
And here's the main river. So the whole stretch of the main stem of the Housak was studied, I think it was back in 2009?
Something like that.
Yes. But there wasn't the same information for these small tributaries. And, you know, we know on Ladbroke, for example, there are some flooding problems there. So Ladbroke is here. That's this orange, this is the watershed boundary. So everything within this area drains to this stream. It's about a two-square-mile drainage. Whereas Tubbs Brook here, this orange boundary is the watershed. It's about six square miles. So both obviously coming into the Housak. So there are two phases of this work, Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is mostly a mapping exercise where we take what kind, any kind of information that exists in the state mapping database for topography, aerial photography, soils information, stream locations. And what we do is we break the stream network up into what we call reaches. These are stretches of the river that are pretty uniform in their slope and how wide the valley is relative to the stream, what kind of soils the stream is meandering through. And that becomes kind of the unit that we study. So we, we assess one reach and then we move on to the next reach. And when we do that, we have a long list of things that we evaluate in that Phase One mapping study. We look at the land use. So, you know, whether it's forested or agricultural in the river corridor. We look at channel modifications, you know, whether there are lots of bridges or culverts in the reach, or whether we can see bank armoring, you know, straightening in the mapping. And then we actually do go out for a day, kind of a quick reconnaissance to verify the information. But this first phase is really just to get a baseline understanding of the stream network and then use that information to try to pick which reaches we're going to do a more detailed study in the field. Usually with these projects, we kind of have a limited amount of funds that we can dedicate to the field work. It's a more intensive effort. So we pick a subset. So here are the reaches. Again, here's Tubbs Brook, Ladbroke. And I don't know if you can see it, but the darker blue line are the reaches where we did the field assessment. So down at the mouth of the Housak, all the way up along, past, along Skippery Road, up Mount Anthony Road, about, actually, past the town line and about halfway up to the headwaters in Bennington. And on Ladbroke, from the mouth of the Housak, up Ladbroke Road to Sharp Bend there where another tributary comes in and the stream kind of gets smaller from that point up. So when we do the, the field work, it's quite a bit more detailed. We walk every stretch of the, the stream. We get measurements of the width and the depth of the channel in various spots. We map any areas where there's severe erosion, either along the bank or if it's a big slope failure. We look at the buffer conditions and any areas where stormwater might be coming in that's affecting the flow erosion. And with all that, we come up with basically two assessments. One's called a rapid geomorphic assessment, and the other's a rapid habitat assessment. So these are evaluations of the relative stability of the stream, how badly is it eroding or is it stable? And on the habitat side, you know, what kind of habitat exists there for, mainly for the native fishery trout is what we're, yeah.
Is there a particular time of year you do those measurements?
Yeah, yeah. We do it during low-flow conditions, usually in like late summer or fall. And try to do it then because the vegetation is, that's when it's kind of at its peak and you can assess, you know, how good the vegetation might be covering the banks and that kind of thing.
Varies quite a bit.
It really does.
May through August and September.
Well, it does, yeah, yeah. We did all these assessments in about a month period, actually. It was, it was late August into, into early September. Yeah, it was pretty low-flow conditions, with the exception of that one rainfall event showed you the picture of the runoff.
You need the flow low enough so you can walk on the stream. In the spring, it would be kind of hard to get up and down there. So you're right, it changes a lot.
Good par waiters.
Or more.
I don't know how it affected the study. I mean, that's, I don't know how it impacts the study when you're measuring width and, and depth.
Oh, so we, so we go down to the bottom of the channel regardless of where the water level is. And most of the, those measurements are intended to give a sense of how wide and deep the channel is when it's flowing full, what we call a bank full event, you know, like a spring runoff event. And, yeah, I'm not getting into a whole lot of detail here, but I'm happy to. I mean, the idea is you want to figure out whether, like a spring flow is going to be contained in the channel completely, or whether it's close to spilling out of the channel, trying to understand whether that reach has floodplain access that might provide some of those benefits I mentioned earlier, or whether it's, you know, prone to erosion and what that means for nearby infrastructure and bridges, culverts, that sort of thing. Speaking of bridges and culverts, wherever we come upon a crossing, we collect quite a bit of detailed information about each bridge and culvert. We look at the, the width and, you know, the opening width and height of the bridge or culvert. We look at the conditions upstream and downstream of the culvert, whether there's erosion present or debris or sediment that's building up, which often happens at the upstream side of the culvert. And we, we look at the general conditions of the culvert in terms of, you know, how long the culvert, how much longer the culvert might have in terms of its lifespan. And like the stream assessments, we come up with two ratings, geomorphic compatibility and aquatic organism passage. Geomorphic compatibility basically tells us how compatible is the structure with the stability and width of the stream upstream and downstream? Is it too narrow or is it wide enough? And aquatic organism passage tells us, you know, I'm sure you've all seen, a culvert that is sitting up, the outlet is perched up above the stream. Well, that's really difficult for, under a low-flow condition when a trout or any other fish is trying to migrate upstream that can't navigate that drop. So that tells us something about whether that crossing is passable for a fish, for native fish. All right. So, so that's what we do. I thought I, I've got a number of pictures here. It's kind of like a slideshow of what we saw on these different brooks. So this is Ladbroke. And these pictures you're looking at are in the lower sections of the brook. Yeah, we have this kind of funny naming convention for the, the reaches. And my colleague made some of these slides. So when you see these numbers, M05, S101, I mean, where you see a one at the end, that, that indicates that's the first reach on Ladbroke, which all of these show. Where you see a two, that would be the next reach upstream. Here's Ladbroke. Well, this is the Housak River, but here's Ladbroke coming into the Housak. And just upstream, not too far upstream from there, just downstream of the Mobile Home Park, is the railroad crossing. So that, this is actually looking from downstream up through that culvert opening. The channel is about 15 feet wide there, but this culvert opening is about seven feet. So it's less than half of what the channel width, you know, wants to be there. And I'll get to that in a little bit here about what that means for flooding. Moving upstream, this is Church Street, crossing here, coming around the corner of Ladbroke, and then up to Route Seven. I don't know if you can see, there is a perched culvert there underneath Route Seven.
It's in my backyard.
Okay.
Look familiar, Dennis?
Yeah. And the, and the culvert does sit up high and the water goes down.
Yep, cascades down. Yeah, it's, it looks to be a pretty old metal culvert. It's not in too bad a condition.
When did Route Seven go in? Fifty-some odd years ago?
Yeah. That's, that's about, you know, how long metal culverts are good for, before they really begin to rest. Is that right, Joel?
Yes.
Four to fifteen years.
Okay. So moving upstream, just up from the Route Seven crossing, there's an old dam there. I don't know. I knew you know the history of that dam. We didn't really look into it too much, but I wondered if, you know, there's an old building next to it. I wonder if that was, there was an old mill there.
Mill.
You know, this is really common. We, there are dams on every stream, even the smallest of streams that we assess. We see dams all over. So going up from Route Seven up along Ladbroke, there's actually some pretty nice stretches of Ladbroke. Again, here's the, the two at the end. This is the second reach of Ladbroke. The stream channel was in pretty good shape upstream of Route Seven in terms of its stability and the habitat that it had. There was a pretty good forested corridor along most of it. You know, there are some areas where Ladbroke Road is right on top of the stream and there's, you know, some erosion that's happened. And town's done some work historically to try to remedy that. And some of these areas do, you know, represents pretty significant sources of sediment, but not, not terrible. Actually, not quite as bad as what we saw on some, on Tubbs Brook and some of the upstream areas from road runoff alone. Here's another, here's Pratt Road. There's a perched culvert. So this culvert, you know, gets a, a lower score for, probably about the worst score you could get for aquatic orders and passage because that's about a two-foot drop.
What do, what do they look at for, for fish? What's the height?
Yeah, um, you know, an adult brook trout, if there's a pool downstream immediately at the outlet, an adult brook trout can navigate about a foot drop at best. Juveniles can't do much more than a couple of inches. But that's just one component. You know, if the fish can get up into the culvert, if the culvert has a steeper grade and the flow is really shallow and swift, you know, if it's a long culvert, it can't, there's no, there's no place to rest. It can't get upstream. So there's kind of two, two factors there. Okay. So this is Tub, these are pictures of Tubbs Brook. Again, T101, first reach of Tubbs Brook. This is the confluence with the Housak River. You can kind of tell in this picture, there's quite a bit of sediment that's, you know, when the tributary hits the you know, when the tributary hits the, the main channel, when both, when they're both flowing pretty good and the Housak River stage is elevated, you know, that sediment that the tributary's carrying tends to fall out right at that confluence. But there was a lot of sediment here. It kind of suggested that Tubbs Brook carries quite a bit more sediment than Ladbrokes because Ladbrokes didn't have the same, same condition. So Lad, or Tubbs Brook was really interesting. You know, the, the lowest reach from the confluence up to the post office is, you know, an agricultural field and the stream was probably pretty manipulated through there over the years. You know, there, we found some burms along the channel and pretty common to see a, a channel that's unnaturally straightened through an agricultural field. We did see that there. But then moving up from the post office upstream, there's a lot of different types of stream channels from, maybe, I'm sure some of you know about these swimming holes. We saw a very-
Across from my house.
That's your house there?
Right across from it.
Okay.
Proper.
You ever go out and, and look at the fish in this pool? We, we saw-
There's some big rainbow.
Rainbow, yeah. That's what I thought it was. We saw probably a fourteen-inch-
We don't want that word to get out. I know the Coopermans who own the place don't want the word to get out.
Snake fishing coming up.
Headlights.
Yeah, that's, that's quite a nice pool. Really interesting.
Do you go to the one above? Not this one here?
Yeah, we got another one.
This one's got big trout in it, but so does the one right at the, up the rocks right there.
Oh.
And the one above that too, but the one above the rocks right there where it runs down is about-
A little kettle there?
In the middle, it's about five foot deep and around the edges, it's about eight or nine foot deep.
Yeah.
It's just sediment that's filled it up in the middle.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a great spot.
It's a really neat, neat feature. So, you know, when you think about how rivers change over time and how they erode, these bedrock outcrops that the river flows to are really important features in our assessment because they, if there's any erosion happening downstream that's migrating upstream, this is the stopping point, right? You know, a bedrock, we call it a grade control because it literally controls the grade of the stream.
During Irene, you couldn't see any of the rock at all. It was just a wall of water.
Wow.
That was coming down there. It was incredible.
So moving up Tubbs Brook here, here's the Skippery Road Crossing. Joel and I and Michael looked at this a number of times. There's an old boiler, this is pretty classic engine, town engineering, old boiler tube and then another culvert alongside a, I don't know, I don't remember what the history is here, but. And so we've talked about this, you know, obviously being a problematic area in terms of flood, flood conveyance and there's been some erosion upstream there.
Where's that? Right at Hemlock, Joel? Right before you start up by John Lee?
I was trying to think who was the road for me.
Oh, yeah, when they put that in there? Who are we going to blame for that one?
Moving upstream, here's the next gorge and swimming hole. But in the upper reaches, you see now the four, these are the fourth, this is the fourth reach up from the, the mouth. You know, we did start to see, there seemed to be a lot of sediment, finer sediment that was in the channel. And we wondered where that was coming from and every time we kind of stepped out of the river and looked, you know, we saw there are steeper roads up there, mossy or gravel. And where they do discharge, you know, runoff, it's carrying that sediment into the, into the channel. So we did see kind of that cause and effect up there. There is some agriculture in the, that the stream flows through in the upper reach as well. Some pasture that, where there were some impacts on the stream. So I mentioned, you know, using kind of the whole of that information that we collect, we come up with these different ratings of stability of, of the stream. So this is a map of Ladbrokes geomorphic stability. Again, we went, you know, from the mouth up to most of the way up, up the channel. Here's the legend. Green is good, red is bad, and then orange and yellow is somewhere in between. So I mentioned, excuse me, I think probably for obvious reasons to many, that the lowest reach of Ladbrokes that takes these unnatural right-angle turns here. There's been a lot of manipulation at Ladbrokes historically there and there's a lot of encroachment and development around the channel. So that's why there's yellow fare rating here. And I mentioned that up from Route seven up, the channel was actually in not so bad shape. The stability was pretty good, so it got a good rating. Tubbs Brook is a little more variable. Again, here's, here's the map. Here's the watershed boundary. And again, we went up pretty far with our field assessments. I mentioned, you know, the lowest reach of Tubbs Brook. Here's, you know, agriculture in the valley. Typical to see a lower stability rating there because of past manipulation of the channel. But then the middle part here, you know, Tubbs Brook flows through a pretty long stretch where there isn't much around it in the way of, of roads. Here's Skippery Road here. And Hemlock Hill. Here's the crossing. So it got a, a good rating here in the middle stretches. It wasn't until we got up into the upper reaches where we started to see, again, it's orange, started to see those impacts from sediment in the channel, I think mostly related to stormwater from the roads, which, you know, we've been talking to Joel about.
Was that where it runs on Mount Anthony Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So, so those are the results of the assessment. And I mentioned what we do from there is based on the results and, and our observations of what we saw at specific points along the stream, we come up with potential project areas. These projects range from buffer plantings to improve the conditions along the bank and the stability of the bank, to culvert upgrades where, you know, the culvert or a bridge is too small or deficient from a geomorphic standpoint. So this is just an example map. And all of these maps are in a draft report actually, which is floating around there if you want to look at it. But this is just to give you an idea of, you know, types of projects on Ladbrokes in the lower area. We've got a bunch of these orange dots are infrastructure resiliency. These are culverts that are deficient in terms of passing flood flows and sediment debris, that sort of thing. And then up along Ladbrokes, there's some stormwater and road erosion project areas that we identified and talked to Joel about in a tour in the field. Tubbs Brook, again, these orange dots are mostly culverts and bridges that are, have some issues. Another theme in Tubbs Brook, the, these yellow triangles, stormwater management. These are the gravel road issues where runoffs come down in the stream. And then the Housak, while, while we didn't actually walk or paddle the, the Housak, it was done before. We, we looked at, kind of reviewed that information, did a little touring along the roads and looking at the river from different viewpoints. And we did, well, the picture that I showed you, that floodplain that was functioning in Irene, you know, that's a valuable floodplain from a mitigation, flood mitigation standpoint. So we identified that as, as an important floodplain protection area. You know, there is, one of the recommendations that came out of that old report was across from the wastewater facility, there's a big bank failure. I'm sure many of you have seen. And there's actually a berm on the inside bend, you know, protecting the superfund site and the treatment facility. And that berm probably is part of the reason why that slope failure is as bad as it is because the berm contains the flow in the river, makes the velocity higher along that outer bank and has continued to erode that slope. Michael and I did look, kind of look at that slope failure and talked about options. You know, it's really not threatening anything at the moment in the way of infrastructure or property, but it's obviously a big source of sediment in the river. So there are some options for dealing with that kind of thing, but it doesn't appear to be a high priority at the moment. So these are just pictures of the different types of projects, infrastructure resiliency generally. You know, bank erosion along property and culverts that are insufficient in their width. Corridor protection and buffer plantings. This would be, here's that picture of that, that big bank failure across from the superfund site. But there are a number of opportunities to improve buffer vegetation in, in the watersheds that we identified. And then some other types related to runoff from the roads or gullies that have formed over the years that lead down to the, the brook and carry sediment. We identified a number of those. So one of the things that is, I think, most helpful for the town from an infrastructure standpoint that comes out of these studies is a list of culverts and how they rank in terms of their, like I mentioned, the geomorphic compatibility and the aquatic organism passage. So this is an exhaustive list of culverts that we looked at in detail on Tubbs and Ladbrokes. It's got a column here that's the percent bank full width. So as an example, here's Skippery Road, twenty-two percent. That means that both those culverts combined are about a quarter of the width of what the channel ought to be. So that's a really undersized structure or combo structure. And it gets subsequently, it gets a score of mostly incompatible. You know, and then, well, one pattern you see is every single one of these numbers is under a hundred percent by, by quite a bit. This is pretty common. In a lot of our studies, we tend to see old culverts that, you know, don't meet the bank full standards. It's a long haul of, you know, over the years of upgrading these structures. And, and so this is a list that will help the town prioritize these in addition to the hydraulic ratings that you'd get from P-Trans.
Yeah.
So just a couple more slides here. Just wanted to give you a few examples of some of the high-priority culvert projects that we scoped out in more detail. That was kind of the last phase of this project. Do the assessments, identify projects with input from the town and committee and A and R. Prioritize the projects and pick a subset of them, five areas to, to scope in more detail. And this would be to, you know, get the town or whoever would be the project proponent further along and, and set up for, you know, a grant that would actually then cover more design if needed or the implementation of the project. That happened in this case, Skippery Road, there's a, right at the Hemlock Hill. Here's Hemlock Hill Road. Here's Skippery Road. There are a series of a couple culverts here carrying an intermittent tributary. And where it discharges, this is kind of like down in the gully looking up at the culvert outlet. There's, there's quite a gully that formed over the years that eroded down to the stream. Probably a lot of the sediment we saw down from here was caused by this spot. So we worked with Joel and came up with a, a design to replace this culvert and actually Michael and Joel got a grant to, I think, cover, cover most of the work. So this will get a, right now it's an eighteen-inch culvert. It'll get a thirty-six-inch culvert, which would accommodate the stream flow upstream.
What do you do about the height?
Yeah, so the, the outlet end is going to be dropped down and then there'll be rock at the outlet. And these little orange, so here's the outlet here. These little orange spots indicate where we would do some check dams in the channel here to slow the water down and, and try to stop some of that erosion. And because you can't, can't get equipment down in here very easily, those will be built by hand with logs and rebar and stone as part of the, this project and the grant. And then here's Mount Anthony Road and Fowler's Way. This area, there's kind of a discharge of stormwater and sediment comes into Tubbs Brook. And we walked this area with Joel and, you know, all this type of work on gravel roads is coming down the line with a, a permit from A and R called the Municipal Roads General Permit. That's going to require quite a bit of upgrades to gravel roads in the way of ditches and stone lining and culvert upgrades. And this is happening all across the state, so it's actually quite a, quite a big burden for most towns. So this was an attempt to start to peck away at some of the higher priority spots and develop a, a design for mitigating road erosion. Now jumping over to Ladbrokes, there's, right at the pump station upstream of the Mobile Home Park, there's a makeshift dam that was built. Not really sure for what purpose, but-
Is that on the other side of Route seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, this is down by, right by the railroad. Down from Church, is it Church Street or Church Road?
Yeah.
And so Ladbrokes comes under Church Road and then down by the Mobile Home Park and then comes under the railroad to the Housak. And this is right upstream of the Mobile Home Park. And, you know, it's some, it's somewhat problematic in the way that it's building up sediment behind it. And so it would cause, whenever there's flooding down there, which we know is bad, it would exacerbate that flooding because, you know, now the stream bed's higher and the waters can have a tendency to spill out more into that area.
And that all survived Irene?
I, I don't know actually whether this was here before Irene or not.
And that's the old trailer park, so that's been your follow-up.
So, you know, we spent quite a bit of time, because this area is of such concern for flooding, I'd love the reality check here on some of these maps. But we, I mentioned, you know, we picked five projects. Well, there were three project areas here that we decided to study in, in more detail. I don't know if everyone's oriented here, but here's the railroad. Here are the two parks. Here's Route seven. Ladbrokes comes down, comes under Church Road up here and takes this kind of horseshoe bend here before it comes down to the Housak River. We did some hydrology and hydraulic modeling of this area to understand what the flood conditions are now. And this work lined up really well with the FEMA flood mapping. So in other words, the data we use is, you know, a little different from what FEMA used, but it was, the end result was consistent. And so once you have a model like this that predicts where flooding happens, you can begin to tinker with certain parts of it to see what effect it might have. So for example, you can take that dam out or make the railroad culvert substantially bigger and see whether that alleviates flooding in the part. So this is kind of a, yeah, this is an existing conditions map of flood depths in the- So, this is kind of a, yeah, this is an existing conditions map of flood depths in the area around the park. The deepest purple is over five feet. The yellow is a foot. I, you know, from what I've understood, we know this area floods frequently, but I was hoping to get a sense of how, how frequently, and whether this is just a reality check.
Well, it's, depends on what debris is laying around.
Yes.
When the floodwater comes up, if there's mattresses and old chairs, they go on to block the culvert going under the railroad track.
Yep.
Or, that's been the problem.
Yep.
And the town of Parnell's, after one time, they hauled out how many truckloads of stuff out of there. I think probably the wake-up call is, that doesn't exist anymore, we hope.
Yeah.
Six huge dumpsters were taken out of that park after the flood.
It's kind of a self-inflicted wound.
Yep.
How much, Ron?
Six big dumpsters.
After Irene, or?
No.
Or after a different flood?
One of the, one of the rainstorm.
Before Irene, right?
I think that dam was for the homeless guy. I think he bathed in that. He lives down in that area, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That kind of stuff should, we should go just knock that out, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the park owner?
No, that, that homemade dam and things like that.
Oh, I mean, but the park owner could do it too. Where the village, yeah.
Well, as far as that thing under the culvert, I mean, that culvert under the railroad, that's the railroad. I don't think the town or the state or anybody's gonna do anything with that, but maybe they can. But as far as that other stuff goes, if that debris was out of there, that's what plugged up that culvert. You get mattresses and box springs and everything else. And they had it dammed up first so they could, they swimming down there.
Yeah. So, place for the other kids hang out, you know, it's... That was my concern about coming here tonight. The racetrack right now, there's nobody here for management, but I know that a lot of people are using the racetrack right now, and it's a good thing. The sheriffs go in there, they're walking, they're biking, there's a dog, dog run, in and out of the river, fishing, some four-wheeling and stuff, and everybody seems to be fairly, you know, comfortable down there. And it's a place for the kids to play and hang out, not to build a dam, I don't know where that came from, but I'm sure that's part of it, but, right now, it's, Green Mountain's gonna be a very important part of Parnell, the racetrack, property. And my concern was, I know that down at the far end, Di-Tam, those culverts are bad, and probably talking about taking them out, but when you take those, close that entrance down there, that means only one place to where you can go in and out of the racetrack, the south. And the railroad tracks block that. A lot of people are down in there. This, that's a place where you can get in and out in emergency. At one time, we had a Lollapalooza, there was thirty thousand people. And it worked, we kept a fire lane through there, and the rescue squad and the fire department went through there, because most of the time, Route seven was gridlocked. So, I, kind of, listening to, people use the racetrack now, and I feel comfortable that it's coming back to where we use it. Building probably needs to be torn down at some point. I've been in it two or three times, and it's deteriorated very badly. They're throwing things through the windows and stuff like that, but the property is being used very nicely right now. And I, I hope it's our future, that somewhere we can get some money or get somebody to hold it, where it could be a big asset for people to go into. A little bit more control, but right now, the sheriff goes in there, he sees people walking, the dogs are running, the kids are going with stuff, and doesn't seem, we're onto a handle who's going in there and doing some vandalizing. We've cut that down a little bit, but that's another issue. But, we do need another place to go in and out of, in an emergency.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I, I don't know, I brought some pictures of, I, I'm just a fan of this damn place, and I, I just hope that, you know, there's pictures of when it was, you know, here, and, and I hope it can come back. It's just, hey, we need it. And it, it needs some work down below. It's just the pictures of the parking lot, the way down the end is, you know...
Shuttle used to run on.
Probably it's not a good thing that, that every inch of that is paved. That's probably not.
Halfway the elevator.
But that's, that's in the glory days, that's just one side. But, town people are going back in there and now using it a little bit.
Yep.
You're too young to remember this.
Well, I, I can tell you, as far as the entrance, this secondary entrance...
Was not.
So, what you're saying is that it represents a hazard to keep something open to be able to get in through there with the north entrance closed.
Right.
Because when you only have one, if there's a train stalled or derailed there, you have to have some kind of access there.
Which is right, right here.
The train likes to stop, the train guys like to stop at Stewart's, and they'll park there for some time for...
Yeah, they do, all the time.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, when they get in, they stop, they park there, and they go into Stewart's.
There's even steps outside.
About ten o'clock at night, they stop, they're down the bank when Stewart's getting off.
No, that's legal.
Yeah?
I guess.
What are the, what are the cross-sections between lines?
Yeah, so, these are, this is part of the modeling that we do, hydraulic modeling, so, it's, at each of these points, we measure where the water elevation, the velocity would be. So, the punchline here, and to your concern about, you know, this discussion about this current crossing here that's not necessarily utilized frequently...
No.
But could be. You know, we looked at three areas here, the dam that I just showed you a picture of, the railroad crossing, and then these two, and I don't have a picture in, in the slideshow, but there are two culverts side by side, four feet in diameter, that are in pretty bad shape.
Yep.
They're silting up upstream. And so, what we did is, we said, you know, okay, the flooding is bad here, part of it's because the culverts are undersized and not enough water can squeeze through them, but we also know the debris, it sounds like, really exacerbates that problem. Well, what would happen if we just removed that dam, or we just made the railroad culvert bigger, or we just, you know, did away with this, this crossing, or made that crossing an appropriately sized crossing for the stream? And what would happen if we did all three of them together? We can kind of evaluate what, what happens with the flooding levels. And the, the punchline here is that the most important thing is the railroad. The railroad culvert is the biggest constriction, and really what causes, especially when it's probably jammed up with any kind of debris, really, man-made debris, or, you know, sediment or logs that could come down, you know, Ladbroke and Bigfoot. So, this crossing, the two culverts side by side here, you know, they, if they were to get clogged, that may have, may exacerbate flooding.
It would back up in the trailer park.
In the park, too.
It would.
But, the predominant stressor here, if you will, or cause of flooding, is the railroad culvert. I did speak with a man named Ted Krug, who's the engineer, chief engineer for Pan, Pan Am Railways. I engaged him with some maps and a phone conversation, told him what we were doing, explained it, and basically sounded like, you know, this culvert's really not on their radar for replacement, it's not in poor condition. And so, it would probably take a lot of pressure, you know, and reason, or funds, that, that weren't there to...
Their, their argument is, you put your trailer parks in there, after we put our culverts in there, it's your problem.
Yeah.
You put the trailer parks there, why should we have to down a road? Culverts.
Big unneighbors.
So, just...
Hey, Evan?
Oh, yeah.
So, the Ladbroke's always been the source of flooding in the trailer parks, it's never been the Housack River. Is that correct? The river's never gone flooded all the way up, too.
Well...
And over the railroad tracks, is...
It jumped. Not over, but it does get up where it fills a culvert.
Okay.
I've seen it a lot.
So, it, it makes it worse.
It jumped the corner going into the south.
And we, we evaluated that in this modeling, you, you account for what we call tailwater, you know, but there's a wall of water, basically, that Ladbroke's flowing into, and it can't push through, and so, it does exacerbate the flooding, even, even though it's not direct flooding. You know, just to show you graphically what this looks like with the railroad culvert, there's the inlet. Now, this is kind of a cross-section representation, you know, here's the current opening here, and this is really, this is how wide it would have to be right, right here.
Wow.
So, it's gotta get substantially wider.
More than twice.
And, you know, here's the flood level and a hundred-year flood up over the railroad bed versus if the culvert were appropriately sized, it would all pass through the culvert, assuming that there's no water backed up from the main river downstream, whole way back. And here it is, kind of, in a profile view, you know, water up over the culvert and down at the Housack, versus coming through in different floods.
So, when one set of tracks, that interrupts their service to replace that, a job that big, wouldn't it?
Sure.
They don't do that in an afternoon, do they?
No, it's tough to get the railroad to do anything.
I don't know what he talks to.
So, that, that's, that's my presentation.
The brick comes into it sideways.
Yeah, exactly.
What's that, Ron? I'm sorry.
The brick comes into it sideways. We're looking at the outlet, that little picture here. That was nice, the brick comes right out, straight under it. But when it's coming down, it goes right into it sideways.
Here.
Oh, yeah. It's gotta take a turn to get in there.
Yeah, so, it would be a lot more efficient, right, to have this culvert?
Straight shot under there.
Yeah. It turns, goes underneath, beyond the railroad.
But that river does come up and flood that culvert. We have a flood. And it ain't every, every hundred years either.
No.
You missed the year when we had the big flood, that was nineteen thirty, twenty-nine, thirty. Then it went, took out the Covered Bridge in North Parnell.
Okay.
And things like that. That was a lot bigger than Irene.
Yep.
Yeah, if you're vertical bars and one of those first grates went back to those years...
Couple of years back.
Didn't back, not just nineteen thirty, but even nineteen ten, nineteen twelve, monster floods through North, that's why North Adams built the flood control stuff.
Yep.
From all those floods up through the thirties. Talk about encroachment.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the spruces in Williamstown?
No.
It's a trailer park there that flooded out, and FEMA bought it.
Okay.
Enclosed it.
How long ago?
Irene.
Oh, Irene, okay.
Irene.
Yep, whoops. Yeah, so, I don't necessarily need to read these, but just some brief conclusions there that you would see in the report. Ladbroke overall was pretty good stability compared to certain parts of Tubbs Brook. And there are lots of, most of the culverts that we looked at on Tubbs and Lad are very undersized.
But that's, that's not, I mean, you see that.
That is very common to see that list, a list like that, in other watersheds and towns. And that's, really, that's just a legacy of culvert design. Culverts were historically designed to pass a twenty-five-year flood for a municipal culvert, if it was, if it actually had a design, that, you know, which is pretty rare, even going back, you know, thirty or forty years. And, you know, mo, if you, if a culvert can pass a twenty-five-year flood without spilling over the road, it can usually be about half the, the width of the channel, so, in other words, you can squeeze a lot of water through, pressurized flow through a narrow culvert, but it tends to cause problems upstream and downstream with flow velocity and erosion over time. So, that's what I've got, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or go back through any slides you want to revisit.
And other parts of the report do list, list more specific projects that you guys could seek funding for.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's a list of about thirty-five projects across the town. Yep, in the report.
And that's just these two roads? These two streams?
That's right.
We still have other places in town.
Yeah, and it's, you know, that's an exhaustive list, and, and it's prioritized with a few different criteria. It's not like, and, you know, there's a roadmap there for picking which projects are gonna have the most impact.
What were you saying about Tubbs, Ron?
Well, Tubbs Brook, the problem with that is, of course, it's a good thing that farmers got that big field down next to the railroad track, because that takes most of the flood when they give it. But all that, that, the river is higher than the stream. So, when it gets down there, and that's why it gets full of sediment, it lays there, because it can't get into the river.
Wow.
And actually, the town cleaned that while going along. They did clean that, underneath the railroad, there's a railroad trestle there, that's very, isn't very high. And also, the bridge on three forty-six isn't very high. But we had a guy with a small bulldozer, he had to clean that all the way down into the river, and he helped a lot. Plus, there was a lot of debris, trees, because trees line both sides of it, they fall into it. People aren't paying any attention, and of course, then they make dams.
We took a farm machine, you know?
We've had ice dams in there, too, in, you know, a big rainstorm in March, and it busts loose, and jams up. That bridge has taken a beating through the years. We've had a couple tractor-trailers in there that kind of jammed it up for a while, too.
You gotta come from the tannery.
Yeah. Nothing clogs a bridge like a tractor-trailer.
Won't go through the culvert, huh?
Won't go through, won't go under. So, the study that was done when we were here in two thousand eight or nine was more about the Housack River and the fluvial natural flow of it. And I forget, what was done? Was anything done, was, was anything removed, or riprap removed, or, does anybody remember?
There's been some discussion of acquisition of easements and others to put buffers along the Housack to try to...
Well, they did it down on the farm just before you go into our state, there was all riprap.
But not riprap, I mean...
McMahon's?
They slowed the water down and stopped getting the sediment into the river.
But if, but the, the river's gonna move one way or the other, so the idea is that the state would pay for the land, reimburse the farmer for the loss of the land.
Right.
If it does it right.
Through the years, as it took out a corner of his property.
I don't know, I don't think any of that's been done.
But that's not really causing the problem of these two.
But Joel, you were approached about that, weren't you, about easements on your land?
Yeah. So, how does Tubbs Brook wind up lower where it goes into the Housack? Just the way the, some big runoffs caused it to kind of bottom out there?
Even a guy as short as me couldn't walk underneath that railroad bridge. I'm sure there was a lot deeper than that years ago.
So, does it build up, I mean, back there, or just naturally?
The river comes down from when, it goes right there, Tubbs Brook goes right through a big clay bank up above, up there by Skippery Road, that's why it was all gray.
Well, you see the color of it, even in that, in that first picture, it was all, I see it all the time.
That wasn't from our gravel roads, that was clay.
Clay runoff, yeah. So, what do you do about that, when it's actually lower than the, the river? I mean, that, that's an obstruction right there. So, I mean, that's kind of naturally caused it to build up, right, and back up? I guess it would only back up to the height of it and then go in.
In Tubbs Brook, at least when we walked it and it had water in it, it was flowing to the Housack under a low-flow condition, so it, you know, it might appear to be, it's effectively at, you know, the same elevation as the Housack, it's not lower necessarily, otherwise you'd see a pond in there.
But the Housack River comes up fast. You don't need a whole bunch of rain, that Housack River comes right up. It goes down fast, too. Once the rain's down, it goes down. It does come up fast.
And a lot of that is because of North Adams and those walls.
What are you gonna do, take out the flood project?
I don't, I don't think they, I don't think they're gonna go for it. I don't, somebody, however, did recommend it.
Yeah, I thought someone was...
There was some study that recommended. Who was it?
I don't know who it was, but I did hear about it.
Oh, yeah, they wanted it gone after, starts way down in Adams Mass and goes up through North Adams.
So I'm just gonna play devil's advocate a little bit here on this stretch, so Tubbs Brook comes down, it carries sediment, whether it be from clay banks or.
A lot of it's from that clay, that's what you saw that day, you, you had to fix your.
Yep, when it was, uh, all that fine sediment that was suspended.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's gray as gray can be.
Yep.
Every time it rains, that's what you see in there.
So, um, but back to this picture, you know, Tubbs Brook is steeper upstream, and then once it hits the floor of the Housak River Valley, you know, flattens out in here and you, what you, I'm sorry, I don't, I couldn't remember your name, but you. You described the sediment, you know, the debris dumping out and the logs and whatnot. From a, from a river and a floodplain function standpoint, you know, that floodplain's doing what it was designed to do there, it's settling out debris and sediment. It's a conflict with the way, with what we wanna do with the land, right? Cause if this builds up and then floods in the farm field, you know, that's a problem for the farmer. But it's these kinds of areas where, um, obviously where the landowner is willing, or, you know, where maybe that land isn't as productive anymore. Maybe the farming is marginal, I'm not saying it is here, but, um, you know, these would be prime areas for, to let the floodplain function again the way it did, and so all that sediment then, um, so long as it isn't backing up and, and causing a flood risk upstream among properties, on improved properties, you know, this would be an important area for that floodplain to function again. Settles out sediment that's otherwise gonna go into the Housak and the river would meander around through it, you know, like it used to do.
If you're not gonna get the farmers to give up rich river bottom.
Yep.
Land. Just for the river to meander.
I understand, I'm, I.
It's really.
You understand where I'm going, just playing, yeah, that, these are.
Some of them fields are the best soil types in the state of America, really are.
So this, this may not be like the candidate for that kind of project, but there are places from these studies where we identify areas where maybe the farming is more marginal, and, you know, that might be a good.
But maybe if he's willing to leave that forest, if he's not gonna farm that area, that, that might be, where it might be worth protecting that.
Around the brook, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you have to leave a buffer anyhow.
Farms, farms have McMahon.
Now, is this just a low wet spot here behind the railroad or?
But these farms have actually done a lot of riprapping where they could save, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Are you, are you familiar with the back of the TAM facility, there's a ninety degree bend there, that's really pretty bad right now?
Yeah. The erosion didn't look terrible through there from what we saw.
Along the Housak side of it?
Yes.
Oh, I'm not saying.
You can see it from, you can see it from the other side of the river from.
I was thinking about Ladbrokes.
Pretty steep on his side, it, on the other side is a sort of a forest and it has a place to spread out.
But you're kind of against riprapping and containing the river?
No, I mean, I think there's, there's a time and place for that, I mean, I did a lot of work for the agency of transportation after the flood and, you know, the recovery mode was, unless the road's gonna move, you gotta stop the river from ruining the, the road, so, you know, I think the, the question is, you know, at what point do you, and not to put a value on improved property, you know, farmland, road, it's a challenging discussion, but, because that land is really valuable to that owner, I, I understand that. So, it's finding those opportunities where the riprap can be avoided. You know, and there, there is definitely projects that happen where riprap is done and it's not done well and it fails and it's gonna fail because the river's gonna take that land over time anyway, so recognizing those spots, I think, um, where those opportunities are to let the river do what it needs to do is gonna help in the whole big picture upstream and downstream over time.
It's a balancing act, huh?
Yeah, I mean, those are, it's, those are challenging spots to find where that's can best happen.
Looks like we need more blacktop road stuff to run on.
That's the solution.
Yeah, well.
They don't like to pay for them. It's the only thing they don't know, you know, as far as grants, we talked about Jim and I a lot, you know, about that. A lot of these, if they did give money for blacktopping, ditch them properly, stone line, you'd alleviate ninety-nine percent, you know.
Yeah, a lot of it, that's what you're saying.
Not a class two road.
You'd miss grading all those, though.
I think your point about the, you know, the municipal permit and our gravel roads and that's something we really need to concentrate on, think about here in the future, because we're faced with some challenges right now, one of them is gravel. By being on the bike and make quality gravel, you know, the, it's just not there anymore like it used to be. The cost is obviously very. We've been pretty, we've been trying to stay ahead of it, we bought a new, uh, rubber tired excavator that's more efficient as far as ditching goes and working on the roads. I think we're trying.
It's a really big burden on towns, you know, the permit, it's gonna be for.
Yeah, could be a lot of work.
Right, and I think, you know, the hard thing to realize too, there's a lot of work just preparing, you know, the paperwork and the data.
You know, hopefully this would meet some of that requirement.
Yeah, no, I, there's some projects in here and things that we flushed out in more detail that are gonna help that, but it's one, you know, one or two of many, many areas.
There's more town.
Got some challenges there.
Well, hopefully it's helpful.
Appreciate the questions and discussions. If anyone has any, if anyone peruses the draft report, has any notices, anything, um, contact me or Michael.
Michael's gonna be a part of Paddle, like, you're the movie.
He's gonna move here from Housak. I couldn't afford it.
That's for the select board, isn't it?
That's also online, so if anybody's watching this.
It's on the website?
Get a copy of that and they can contact us.
On your website?
On, on yours as well and on our website.
Okay.
It's on the Paddle website?
It's on the Paddle website. It's easy to get stuff on the Paddle website, if you, if you know the webmaster.
Yeah.
She's great.
She is great.
A lot of times we'll get comments on local vernacular, so if we've missed anything, yeah, please.
Oh, somebody's out there.
Oh, you got it.
Route three forty-six.
Well, we, we've had a long discussion about how to spell Tubbs.
Two Bs.
I'll show it to you in the town report, it's now T U B S. Well, the. The road is T, is one B, but for some reason, the stream, according to A and R, has two Bs, I have, I don't know, it's not on the USGS map.
Were we talking about this, it's related to the tub, it's the kettle, right?
The wash tub, that's what it's named for.
I think when you look at a USGS quad, there's no need for the stream.
Okay.
Right, Evan, when I moved there, the road sign at the bottom, towards the North Palm Post Office was T U B S, when you went around the other side, it was T U B B S. I didn't know where I lived, I still work on it. You should've seen me at the registry trying to renew my license, and you know how they are now, you need twelve forms of ID and everything, some would say T U B B S, some would say T B, T U B S, women didn't wanna give me a new license. Just go figure out where you live, I'll give you a license. I'm, no, I'm not kidding.
Passport is invalid.
They stopped me at the airport because of T U B S. Man, oh man. There are worse things, I guess.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
It was enjoyable walking your streams.
Now, where are the rest of the trout? I know where those are.
You're gonna be.
Well, that costs, that information costs.
Yeah, I figured.
She actually gets paid for this. You have a fishing line with you, right?
Yeah. Boy, why not?
We didn't see too many of them.
Just we want a motion to end the meeting or take a motion to end the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Favor?